Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the rule? Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge.
President.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
President.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Cleese. Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisee Goya. Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 11 present. Alderman Cleese was not feeling well. She left. Alderwoman Kelly is not joining us this evening. Alderwoman Malisee Goya will not be joining us this evening. And Alderman Schmidt will not be joining us this evening. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. The first item I wanted to mention or the first issue was that Pennechuck, as you probably read, has decided to move back to downtown Nashua. Their historic home, for at least 100 years, 100 years plus, was downtown. And they remained here for all that time. For a long time, they occupied a building on High Street, which is still there, but now joined to the Bank of America building. Then they moved to Four Water Street, and then some decades ago moved to Merrimack. It's been one of my objectives since becoming mayor a few years ago, to bring them back to downtown. Of course, the city purchased them, but under the PUC order that approved that purchase, we don't really have direct control, so we needed to persuade them to make the move. They have certain imperatives, which are that they need to justify to the PUC that any move that they make is cost neutral. In other words, they will not be paying more in their new home than they are in their home in Merrimack. As a result of many people working together, we were able to achieve those goals for Pennechuck. Pennechuck talked with their employees, who, as I understand it, expressed a preference for downtown Nashua, as opposed to up in Merrimack, out in the woods somewhere. And therefore, they made the commitment to try to work with us and with the landowner at the Courthouse Oval to locate there. This is important, I think, symbolically, but also because we bring 60 or 70 people to downtown all day long. People who will want to patronize their downtown businesses will certainly raise the value of that courthouse oval, something that's a building that's been unoccupied for a long time, will, I think, raise the values around the oval and create additional incentive for people in that direct neighborhood to make improvements themselves. So for me, this is an exciting and a historic day. When we have our groundbreaking, which is going to be on Thursday. A lot of people worked hard, so I'd want to particularly mention, of course, the management of Pennechuck. Larry Goodhue, who's the president, Jay Leonard, who's the chair of the board, but also Tim Cummings, who is the economic development director, worked very hard on this. Rob Parsons is the owner of the parcel. He was very engaged in this for a long time. They all played important roles in making this happen. So I'm very happy to be able to say that Pennechuck will be returning under a very long-term lease, so we can expect to see them there for many decades to come. Next, Madam Chair, another happy event. I wanted to mention R-19177, which is the acceptance of a donation from Mr. Dick Anagnos, the owner of the project on Marshall Street, the workforce housing project, 150-some units of affordable housing. His tenants, and workforce housing means people who have incomes up to 80% of AMI, or area median income, which is about in the $40,000 or $50,000 range. Many of the children who are moving into that apartment building, those apartment buildings, now attend Dr. Chris's school. And they are very engaged with the community center at Arlington Street, the Arlington Street Community Center. And so the owner of the project, Dick Anagnos, has agreed to give $26,500 to establish a multi-sport basketball-type court right in back of the Arlington Street Community Center. So under R-19177, we would be accepting the funds. The finance committee, in anticipation of that acceptance, approved a contract. He's giving the money to the city. We are then expending the money to pay the person who's going to put in the court. And there is some time pressure immediacy to this, because we'd like to get it established this fall, so kids can start to use it, and because we want to hold a grand opening on the 25th of October, which is just in a few weeks. If you approve the acceptance of the grant, we will move forward with the contract immediately, and the court will be completed prior to the October 25th opening, and the kids of Crown Hill can begin to use the court. So I hope you will approve R-19177 and join us on October 25th at 5:30 for the opening. There's going to be a shooting contest. Me and some of the aldermen, against anybody really wants to come, against various kids in the neighborhood. Now, you're all betting on the kids, I'm sure, and that's probably a good bet. But no, these will be free throws, so we're at some distance. So I hope you'll come and help us enjoy the festivities. And that's all I have. Madam President.
Thank you. Response to the remarks of the mayor? Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of September 24th, 2019, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
There is none.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one speaker that has signed up, Andy Prohlman.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman. I'm an attorney here in Nashua. I'm attorney Andy Prohlman. With me tonight is Camille Labos, one of the owners of the Country Tavern Restaurant and Alamack Properties at 452 Amherst Street. Before you is a petition to release a facade easement. And I'm really just here to answer any questions the board may have. We have been through the planning board process, the Historic District Commission, and most recently, the Infrastructure Committee, all of whom have positive recommendations for you. I could do a full presentation if you would like, but I'm really just here to answer any questions the board may have tonight.
Thank you.
When the matter comes before the board.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval?
There is none.
Petitions?
Petition to release facade easement.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President, I would like to make a motion to grant the petition. May I speak to my motion?
You may.
This shows really good cohesion between the different forms of government, such what Attorney Prohlman has said. This originally came to the Infrastructure Committee. We had several questions with it. We went to the Planning Board, and then it also went to the Historical Committee. The good thing is, if you look at the structure, it's not really germane to what the new tenants really want to do. It is totally not cohesive to the now area. The other three corners are quite modernized now. But what's really good with it, different groups work together. Many of the stuff in there, even though the building itself does not hold a true historical value, some of the stuff in it, it was built to the period. And the city does have the right to the access to some of those boards, hinges, and other different things that may have some value. So this is a great deal, in my opinion. It shows how different boards can get together and work on this. And I recommend the passage of this petition. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage to grant the petition. Additional comments? Alderman Clemmons.
Through you to the previous speaker. Did you get Elizabeth's approval on this?
After an exhaustive eviction notice was given to the ghost, so they put her off.
Thank you. Motion before us is for final passage to grant the petition. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Keith Wyrich, 14 Court Street, Nashua, to the Auditorium Commission for a term to expire March 31st, 2021; Jessica Gorham, 97 Western Avenue, Hennecker, New Hampshire, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2020; William Slavinsky, 46 Berkeley Street, Nashua, to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2022; and Lawrence Hirsch, 12 Seaman Burke Drive, Nashua, to the Nashua City Planning Board for a term to expire March 31st, 2020, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the September 25th, 2019, Infrastructure Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October 2nd, Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of resolution R-19177, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $26,500 as a donation from A.W. Rose LLC to be used for the installation of a multipurpose sport court at the Arlington Street Community Center.
Alderman Dowd, do I have a motion?
I believe we need a motion to withdraw from committee.
Motion is to withdraw from committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading of resolution R-19177, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $26,500 as a donation from A.W. Rose LLC to be used for the installation of a multipurpose sport court at the Arlington Street Community Center.
This is the resolution the mayor spoke about in his opening comments, for those of you who are interested in that. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-19177.
Motion is for final passage of R-19177. Discussion on that. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of resolution R-19180, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a lease agreement with 131 Burke Street LLC for 141 Burke Street.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-19180.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of resolution R-19181, renaming Park Social at Levine as Park Social.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Karen, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. New business ordinances?
There are none.
More additional sponsors?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the additional sponsor. Alderman Gathright. Thank you. New business ordinances?
There are none.
Period for general public comment. I have two people signed up. Stacy Lawton?
Stacy Lawton, 80 Elm Street, Unit 1, Nashua, New Hampshire. Just wanted to extend thank you for the members of the board who reached out, who either weren't able to attend my housewarming party or those who were able to attend. It was a nice time. Some people may know, some people may not. My family and I went through a year-long struggle. We left the main street place that we were living and then went into a period of partial homelessness. And it was quite difficult. And now we've acquired a place on Elm Street, Nashua, that's very nice. It's more than what we could have ever dreamed of. And I just want to thank those who were able to share that time with us. And I just wanted to come again tonight, speaking about something I've spoke about in the past. It's about vaping products. Again, as I said last time, I'm not talking about combustible cigarettes. I'm talking specifically about vaping devices. And right now, as we watch the news and we see things going on, we're finding that since October 1st, there's been a total of 1,080 lung injury cases associated with e-cigarettes or vaping products have been reported to the CDC from 48 states and one territory. 18 deaths have been confirmed from 15 states. And there has been a death now getting closer to our area. Massachusetts has seen a death, and they've seen numerous lung injury due to vaping. New Hampshire has seen its very first case of a lung injury within, I think it was today or yesterday, I had heard about it. And now it's getting closer. And this is more than just, I think, it's more than just the concern that we were raising back in April. It is now damaging lungs. It is now causing people to die. It's spreading. It's in 48 states. It's in Massachusetts. It's in New Hampshire now. People are getting affected by lung injuries because of vaping. It's time that not just the state takes action, but the city takes action. With the recent state budget that was passed, I noticed that it went up. The smoking age went up by one year to 19, but that still doesn't do enough. I believe the vaping devices need to be banned outright in the City of Nashua, and they need to be banned outright in the State of New Hampshire, whether it be like they didn't mask for a temporary amount of time to figure out any safety concerns or how to regulate them better or ban them outright. They're harming people. We could turn on WMUR tomorrow, and someone right here in Nashua or one of our own students in our schools could be affected by a death because of these vaping devices. And that would be, at that point, it's already sad to see one, two, but when we're seeing all these cases across the country, this is getting to be enough. This needs to stop. And it's not a joke anymore. We need to take these products off our shelves in the city and everywhere. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to talk to you for a few minutes about data management. And we all know I put in a lot of right-to-know requests, and the city has made some pretty big claims and had a lot of words to state about these requests and what they're doing to the city. But I believe a lot of this is the result of the way we maintain our data and how we're maintaining our records, and we're simply not doing it progressively at all. Down in Assessing, we have a vault that's full of property files. They're the equivalent of books on a shelf. And there's 29,000 of them and growing. And it doesn't make any sense to me that we're not looking at ways to scan these files. Why are we not taking an initiative to pay a single fee for a year and pay the 50 or 70 grand and create scanned records of all of these files? So that when the public like me wants to access a file, we're not hearing that, oh, it's going to take five days, and they've got to check it and inspect it, and it's too much work, and you're creating a big burden? Why aren't we looking at ways to create records that are accessible, that are open access the way they should be? It's almost 2020. And right now, I attended a class, and the gentleman who's the chief up in Goffstown, Scott Bartlett, who heads the NHAAO, he was talking about his records. And up there, they keep their property files and their income data separate. So if somebody wants to come in and get a property file, you can just get it. It doesn't have to be checked. Down in Nashua, we combine the income data in the property file, which doesn't affect all files. It only affects files, mostly commercial, that have income data. But the staff has to quickly go through them to remove income data if that's the type of file you have. Now, it's not an overly timely job. Certainly for the files I've requested, they've really all been thinner files, because I haven't done a lot of work in commercial file access. Those files get very thick and take more time. But if you scanned and had a person come in and scan your records, you could separate out the income data. You would have them all scanned. The public could come in like me and go to the computer in the office and just pull up the files I'm interested in looking at. And if I wanted them from home, maybe you can't make that accessible outside to the home. But then the office could easily send you the email within two minutes with the files attached. It would be no work at all. And then as files, data gets added to files, they're not photocopying and running to a vault and stuffing pages into the files. They're just scanning and throwing the electronic record in, which is frankly, a lot easier. So when we hear from management that assessing is a paper-intensive job, it doesn't have to be. And I think if this city talks about wanting to have the best assessing office in the state, then make it so we can access the records, because we can't really do it. Now, I put in a request through legal to access buyer/seller and real estate agent letters, broker letters, that were sent out to verify the sales data from KRT. We were told by the administration that our assessors verified all the sales data for KRT, which turned out not to be true. We never did that job to the level we were supposed to, but that these letters were sent out to verify the sales. I wanted to see the letters, to know if we did it. So I put in a right-to-know. The response back from legal is, okay, that's over 1,000 files, really 1,200. It's going to take four years for us to get that to you. Is that reasonable to tell the public you have to wait four years? That it's a four-year process to access that data? Why aren't they just scanned in a file? And that wasn't a big request. That was just for a letter that would be on the top of the file. That wasn't for them to go through the whole file, take out income data, or do something intensive. Four years to access a single letter? That's absurd that that was the type of response I got. And I don't think this chamber and this horseshoe is doing enough to look at how we access data and how we want that office set up to access data. Last meeting, we heard management talk about putting together the binders. We do seven binders now that we give out to the Board of Assessors and other people who come. And we heard management say, it really doesn't take much time. It's not that intensive. It doesn't. It's very simple. I disagree wholeheartedly, and I wished you spoke to the person who did it for months. The time it takes is a function of what time of year it is. If it's March, April, May, June, July, we are dealing with heavy abatement stuff, the paperwork for the Board of Assessors meeting is enormous. Enormous amount of paperwork. The binders going out were 200 to 250 pages a book. So you're doing seven books. You're putting out 1,400 to 1,700 pages that you're photocopying downstairs to put these books together. That's time-intensive. I don't know why management is telling you, that's easy. It isn't. That took a lot of staff time. And you know what disturbs me more? They work their butt off for a week to put the binder together. The meeting's on Thursday. All the books come back to assessing Thursday after meeting. They throw it all in the trash, and they start printing for the next meeting. You throw away 1,400 to 1,700 pages every other week. All that printing cost, that's enormous. Why are we waiting? You're the green people. Be green. Don't allow us to do that kind of copying and create that kind of waste. Go electronic. Have them bring in a notebook computer. I don't print mine. I bring my notebook in, and I scroll through on my screen, download it, because I don't want to carry 250 pages and flip through it. And I just put it there so I can have it to access. We are doing so much wrong with paperwork, in my mind. And we're doing it to prevent the public from having access. And I think we can do a much better job. And all these complaints that, oh, we have to spend $50,000 on a consultant because we're behind on permits. That permit stuff is malarkey. You're behind on permits because you're not staffed correctly. And you're not looking at your permit data the way you should. But all of that is how you're managing your records. And I just did a right-to-know to get the mayor's letter that he sent out to the board for this audit. I never had the letter. And I'm sure that cost me $500 to get that from the city, to go to legal, have a meeting, pull the document, look at it, and send it to me. That's unfortunate, but I don't know how else to get it. If it was in the record, it would be awesome. If it had been part of the minutes, it would be great. I could get it. But the letters aren't part of the record. So I get it. And when I looked at that, one of the things that the mayor wrote, a number of things that this report was going to do, and one of them was cover staffing. They were going to address the staffing and the management of the assessing office. And I have been a big critic that that audit report never addressed staffing. Why didn't we look at staffing in the office? That was so fundamentally important, in my mind. We have a tremendous lack of staffing in there, and qualified staffing. We're missing qualified people. And we never did that. We skipped that. And so I think, instead of shooting the messenger over and over and over again, I'd like to see the city take some responsibility to get on board to making access real for us. Don't make us have to jump through hoops. I'm with Celia Leonard. I'm writing five, six, seven right-to-knows for the same data. And what I'm finding is legal is sending me the wrong answers. And I'm having to go back and pinpoint them to the email I'm looking for in a server that I know is there that they're saying isn't. I'm doing four, five, and six requests for a single piece of information. And I don't understand why it's so complicated. When I asked for the buyer/seller and broker letters, and I heard it was going to take four years, I said, well, let's make certain they're there. And I went back and forth with legal and said, I don't think you have to look in the files. It should be recorded on the property cards. If they sent a letter, it should be documented. Legal says, no, no, no. It's never documented. I said, it's always documented. I start looking at the property cards with Laura Calhoun. There's no documentation in the cards that letters were sent. So I go back to legal. The clerk in there argues with me, no, we got to look at every file. It's going to take four years to get through this. We got to do this. I marched down to assessing, and I happened to catch an assessor at the printer. And I said, excuse me, did you send any letters out to buyers/sellers and real estate brokers when you reviewed the sales data? And his answer was no.
Ms. Ordolano, one minute to wrap up, please.
Sure. And I asked him to go ask the other three assessors. And he literally marched through the office. I heard him. Asked every assessor. Did you send them? Did you send them? Did you send them? Every one of them said, no. We didn't do it. I marched up in legal, and I said, cancel the request. Nobody sent any letters, which is what I thought. They were going to embark on a four-year event. And I said, I don't understand why you and legal didn't march down to assessing and say, did you guys do this? That was four or five emails that went back and forth on that. And it never existed. So please, come on board and help make data something that's really accessible to the public. And please, do not start this reevaluation until you hire a chief. Don't vote to begin it until you bring a chief on who's going to follow this through for a couple of years. Doesn't have to be a three-year process. I talked to Bob Gagny. He wondered why we didn't do it as a one-year. Just bit it out as a one-year. So please, hold off until you bring somebody in who can run it the way it should be run. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, I think on October 25th, the mayor asked if I will go there to go through some hoops there. I was a hockey player, but in deep respect of Chief and Chong, I was a little dribbler since I was a kid, so we'll see what happens. But I'll do my Basketball Jones on the 25th. If you want to laugh, come on down and see me do a couple shots there. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the 11 Nashua Police Department offices who received the New Hampshire Congressional Law Enforcement Awards on Friday. James Kylula, Sean Maylock, Greg Miller, Scott Cisak, Colin Flanagan, Jeffrey Page, Iain Terrio, Matthew Vincent, Kyle Ingasol, Jonathan Turcott, and Nicholas McCarrion. They have done an outstanding They have done an outstanding job, and they were recognized by this date for their outstanding service.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, first, I just want to express my condolences to the crew and passengers of the plane that went down last week. I know a lot of Nashuans had just seen it at the airshow, and it meant a lot to them. It's been a regular visitor here, and it affected people deeply. I also wanted to, because we didn't have an alderman between then, I went to the Out of the Darkness Walk two weeks ago at Greeley Park, and it was a really well-run event. It was, there was a lot of community support, so I wanted to thank everybody who came and walked with me, everybody who came and supported the cause. They raised a record amount for American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And then, more recently, on this past Sunday in Concord, at the NAMI Walk, they did likewise. So I know there's a lot of concern about mental health awareness and rising suicide rates and increasing instances of violence, and all I can say is, there's a lot of people that are working to try to make a difference and support causes that know what they're doing and are able to improve those situations. So I just want to thank everybody who's working in that way.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations to Kim McCarthy and the McCarthy family for what a wonderful event they put on Saturday at the first annual, what I hope is annual, McCarthy Foundation fundraiser for STEM education in Nashua. I think it was an excellent event. It was well-attended, had a great time, and it was good also because it honored my, our friend, Brian McCarthy. So I look forward to many other events in the future, and I look forward to the success of that foundation going forward.
I, too, would like to congratulate the Nashua Police Officers for their achievements. Also went to the McCarthy event. I, too, hope it's an annual event. It was well-attended. I think they did a really nice job putting that together, and looking forward to the students who might receive scholarships for STEM education from that fundraiser. Committee announcements. Alderman Dow.
Yes, tomorrow evening at Nashua High North at 7:00 PM, the Joint Special School Building Committee. We'll be releasing the report of the Phase 1 of the middle school project, and it outlines all the data that was collected and describes all of the architect's beliefs as to what needs to be changed. I would caution that the prices that may be forthcoming in that report will be high because we haven't looked at paring them back yet to see what the scope of the actual project will be. But, so, the report will outline everything that they found and everything that they recommend. So from that, we will go forward.
Other committee announcements? Human Affairs, originally scheduled for October 14th, will be canceled since there is no new business before us. Do I have a motion?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:03 PM. Thank you, everyone.